Yeah.
All right, I got five o'clock on my phone, so I'm gonna call meeting to order. Begin with the routine business. Open Meetings Act is posted on Northwest Wall as always. And Cody, would you call and roll?
Dustin?
Here.
Heather?
Here.
Kent?
Here.
Brad?
Yes.
All present in the count for, uh, would you join in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. I just, do they still do that at school? Do they have the kids pledge allegiance regularly, every morning?
Every morning, okay, good.
Big deal.
Good, I, oh, maybe. My old school days, we came in past.
Well.
No. Moving on to the consent agenda, as always, you can approve all items in one motion or consider them separately. Do you have any questions or comments?
On the claims, I'm not gonna approve another payment to whoever's taking care of the cemetery. I'd definitely do a better job next month. Like, I approve it this month, or I approve it this month, but with the complaints about the grass not being watered and it's dying. How many people have legitimate bitch? So next month, if it's not better, I'm not gonna approve the payment for that.
Okay, just nodded. Any other comments, or?
Is that both cemeteries that you see in? Okay, I haven't been out there for a while.
There's no, the one by us, obviously, I get to see every day.
Yeah.
They were complaining about the one to the south, so I went and took a little hot lap through there. It looks like they're just gonna start dispensers today, but... The one on the highway, we're in a drought. Grass is dying, you know, there's no, I mean, hope it rains.
It's watering part of the ma- maintenance contract?
Mm-hmm.
I think we supplied the, the equipment to water it, but they-
They have to water it, move the water, but like-
Yeah.
They should've been watering. Unfortunately, I mean, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know when their contract starts.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a starting date, or if it's just a year, a month, a day, and depending on weather. I'd, I'd have to look at it.
It goes from May to October.
May first.
And I think after October, I think then his little thing is done.
Okay. This is his last year of that contract, correct? Do you know what I remember?
I think so.
Okay.
So I just like, you know, I'm like, well, if I keep getting complaints, there's complaints ended last year, and then now this year, like, hey, the grass is dying, and I want water. I don't know if you guys have heard anything.
I have, I have not.
I have not, either.
I don't have any. I have been out there.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Motion and second, any other discussion? Would you call and roll?
Heather?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Move on to item three, mayor's appointments and report. Just a couple things on mayor's report. You might notice that Lisa's not here. She feels bad about that, she, uh, it was just a scheduling snafu, the district track meet. When Ainsworth changed classes, they changed the date of the track meet. She had done her calendar several months ago and didn't realize in the intervening time that the date had changed. I said, you know what, it'd be good practice for us to try to do a meeting on our own, just in case we have an emergency sometime and have to do it anyways, so. That's where she is, uh, she said she'd have her phone if we need to call her. But I don't, I don't think we should have need for that. Other thing is, Monty, could you come on, come up here? Want to take a minute to recognize, uh, Monty Gachman, for he retired recently. But he retired after forty-four years of illustrious service in the city of Ainsworth.
Congratulations.
It's a tall story, but it's just something, it's got-
Oh, is that box work?
Yeah, well, you can keep the money.
It's already been thrown away.
Thanks, Monty.
Forty-five was quite a career.
Thank you.
Any just want to say, or?
Forty-one.
When it's twenty below this winter, and there's ten inches of snow?
Yeah.
Can we call you to help out?
No, tonight's getting in my cold game. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all the ears. Thank you. Pretty impressive.
Yeah.
There's, you read the statistics nowadays about, uh, it used to be people stayed out of career their entire life like that, but that's not very common anymore. People changing jobs every eight, ten, twelve years, something like that, so.
Yeah, and getting somebody trying to replace you is something different.
Give us, give us one highlight or funny short story before you go.
Yeah. I'll be here all night if I've got it.
Maybe, maybe, maybe it can't be on public record.
We should've said that a requirement of retirement was that you had to find somebody to replace you.
That'd still be working. You can bring people out there who want to do it.
All right, well, thanks again, Monty.
Yeah.
Moving on, uh, got a couple of appointments, uh, recommend for the park board. These are, uh, three, are they both three-year terms? I think they're three-year terms, but they end at different times. Of course, we had a couple guys, uh, Brian Delmont and Robbie Francis both moving out of town. They've been on the park board. And so they need to replace them, and I'm gonna recommend that, uh, we replace, uh, what we appointed Sean Furno to replace Brian Delmont, with that term ending January of first of twenty-eight, and Robbie Ashcraft to fill out a term under Robbie Francis' term ending, uh, January first of twenty-six. Both of these fellows are pretty active with the softball and kids baseball. They spend time at the park, they volunteered a lot of time, and so that's how I came up with that, those recommendations.
I'm moving to reapprove the mayor's appointments of Robbie Ashcraft to fill up term of Robert Francis, which ends on one-one of twenty-six, and then Sean Furno to replace Brian Delmont with the term ending one-one of twenty-eight to the park board.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Go ahead, call and roll.
Brad?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, and, uh, Jimmy had come in and talked to me about the park board a little bit, and, uh, I told him, you know, as far as I'm concerned, Jimmy and, and, uh, is ex-official member of the park board, he can go to any meeting, provide input, and that would be welcomed by the park board, so. Keep that in mind, too. Next, we're gonna move on to public hearing. We'll open a public hearing at five oh nine for the one, the long-range six-year plan. One, what did you call it, the one in forever? One six-year plan for highways, roads, and the street improvements. Uh, essentially, just same plan as, uh, last year. No changes to it. Jay, did you have anything you wanted to mention?
I just think we really need to try and get our emergency routes as soon as possible done. They're in bad shape.
That's a street project, right?
Paving district.
Paving district.
Paving district, yeah, that's what I was talking to Lisa this morning a little bit about. We definitely need to look at getting a paving district started, uh, this next budget year, and, you know, First Street, Pine Street, and Harrington, but, you know, also this highway, Highway seven?
Old Seven.
Old Seven here.
Old Seven to the canal.
Yeah, to the canal. I mean, uh, I know there's big potholes in there, I guess I haven't been down it. He said you might fix some of those?
Yep.
Okay.
I see on that it's set up for, that we ask all the time.
The first two-
I would think that we'd want to see maybe a little bit.
I think the first two hundred yards are cement from the highway north, and then after that, it's, um, isn't that right? Then it's asphalt from there to the canal?
I thought when we did the North Main project, the cement was like about the same price as asphalt, so.
At that time it was, so if it is the same price, you would want to definitely do-
I would definitely lean towards the cement.
Yeah, I would, too.
Looking on the plan here, Dustin, like, First Street, it says concrete, you know, that would be a plan, same with Pine, um, same with Harrington, and same with Old Seven. And when we did the last project, cement was on par with oil as well, too. And long-term, there's no question in which way it is to go, even if you have to spend some more. I mean, you would, you would agree with that, too, because I'm thinking like-
Well, the truck traffic and the state coming out, and the trucks going to feed lot, it'd be stupid not, uh-
Take a little street like Richardson, doesn't get as much traffic, but it's been concrete, you've cut holes in it over the years, but it's gonna be here longer than I am. So, but it's, um, we're gonna need to get some community input and get people to buy in on that, and it's, it's gonna be, but it's, it's, it is time, I can't, me personally, I agree, Brad, for infrastructure priorities, it's gotta be right to the top.
You, we put some money in the budget this year for street improvements, what's your thought on, uh, are we doing armor coating some?
Well-
Okay. Do you have other plans for what we want?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do AMZ, a lot of the spider web, you know, get a lot of that this year and not armor coat any of it, and try and save some money on.
Good, okay. Are any of those streets like on a one- and six-year plan, or you got other ones also?
Yeah, I mean, there's some that need replaced, but I'm more focused on getting those three major done.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the key, I mean, we need to start taking the steps for the paving districts, and we just need to, when it comes to budget time, we gotta-
I mean, in, in my mind, if we can get First, Harrington, and Pine, get those concreted, curb gutter, and then just go from there, you know? We ain't gotta do it all, but the major ones, we need to get them done.
And being, those being, those three being emergency routes, and hopefully, I don't, I don't know if there is or not, there might be some state or federal funding on those possibly, where they are emergency routes.
All right, anybody from the public have comments on the road plan? It's public hearing.
Monty, you're, oh, you're, you're resident now, which, what's your, what's your input?
Are you looking at just those three, or are you looking at maybe tying it in to, uh, you know, some of those streets that didn't pass the last time we did a district? Or, are you, you know, because last time they were separated into all these different districts, and some of them opted out, some of them didn't, so it was kind of a patchwork of what got done, what didn't. Are you really looking at, because if you did Pine and, and First, they, they could be one district because they're gonna connect, but I think that was a deal on doing a single district, was they all had to connect, and we didn't use First Street in the last one, so every one was its, was its own.
I think that First and Pine would definitely be probably our number one whole for doing-
It would be one district together, yeah.
It'd be a big one, but yeah, like I say, it'd be-
Nice to get it, huh?
That First Street nest is a must.
And I don't know if the, you know, of course, who knows with funding availability, but the last time the nice incentive was that there was some money available for low-income people and, and basically giving them a little bit of break. I imagine now the cost per foot is gonna be even more expensive than it was the last time.
And those aren't even emergency routes, that's why I'm hoping to be an emergency route, that there's maybe extra money out there.
I don't know if there's gonna be extra money in anything, exactly.
I agree, but-
State and federal are going, but.
Guy might wanna, I mean, look into the state, because at one time, they were talking about putting funding in from Main Street to Pine or Twenty, and they called it a thoroughfare, so the state was gonna put in some money for that.
On First?
Yeah.
Really?
First and Pine. As long as you went from Highway Seven to Highway Twenty.
Connect them like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
At one time, they said they could, there was money out there then, but I'm not sure if there is now, yeah. Called a thoroughfare, and they got voted out, so it didn't, uh, like, you'd look, something looking at it.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna have to research that on any type of avenue we can go, or possibility, because that's, that's gonna be expensive, you know, that's both two major, that's a lot of footage there on those two streets.
Is the previous district paid? Have we paid off the previous paving district now? I would assume we probably have, that's been ten years.
Yeah, all of our stuff's paid.
Oh, okay, that is all paid, so. You do have the debt service funds, that obviously you've got some sewer and water projects you've done, that you can put those toward, but where those are more, you're charging a fee for those services, your, your debt service, sales tax money would be good to use towards streets if you can, and stretch your dollars a little farther. You might think about doing some, and now, I don't know if you're gonna, you're gonna have to bond it either way, but you might think about doing some public outreach ahead of this.
Oh, I agree.
And for, not only for those streets, but for anybody, for anybody else, residents from some of those others that maybe failed the last time to, to come to the city, say, hey, I own this property, or I own this property, and I, I wouldn't vote against if you created one for our street this time around, and, you know, like Elm, for instance, through the school, I, I would think if you talked to the school board, they'd probably be a little more willing this time to maybe say, yeah, we wouldn't opt out of, of a dis- of a paving district to make it look a little nicer in front of the school. So, you know, you might just do some outreach, whether that's just calling some of those or putting some public, you know-
Woodward, first, yeah, first block, and second block in Woodward.
Yeah, right there, there's one block that's done, and get those other two if they're willing now, and-
I know that there's a gentleman that come, approached me down East Eighteenth Street up there, and I was in the crowd, and he made it feel like everybody along that street was on board to do that.
Well, let's just remember, when we go forward on this, let's say we pick First, Pine, Old Seven, Harrington. If the city initiates, initiates, you know, that's one method, but if you get enough people in a section, two blocks, and they want to do it, they can do it as well, too, so that'll be the time, you know, like South Woodward, for example, if they, if you get so, what's that?
Does the public know this?
That's why I think you'd want to do some of those, some of that outreach.
And there's, Kent will do it online, or a radio.
There's different thresholds.
I got Lisa last week on a park thing, that's, she's not, that's not her comfort zone.
There's different threshold, I mean, we'll have to be looked at, but there's different thresholds on each for approval. And I, don't quote me on this, I think it's a lower threshold if it's resident initiated, as opposed to the city, but-
Yeah, for a city one, I think if more than fif- if more than fifty percent of the square foot adopts out, then it, then the district fails. But you're really painted into a corner, it's the only way you could do paving projects is with the assessment in the districts, because you've, that's the way the previous one, one was done, and-
And you don't have the financial capability to just go build streets otherwise. Sounds good, Brad. Glad you brought that up.
Yeah. We did, we've got, we've got, we've got to do something, we definitely do. Jade's saying the same thing, we gotta do something.
Well, if you're wanting to do one, I mean, you're gonna want to think in the next month or two to put it on the agenda to create them, because then you gotta give so many days stopped out, you'd already be probably looking at spring of next year at the earliest to-
Well, we just won't get started.
That's what I mean, you gotta, you better, you better get started now if you're even looking at a spring of next year type of thing to do it. But that gives you time, too, to have another budget come out to where you can, and that would give you time to research if there's grant opportunities to cover part of it, because-
Budget here, exactly, and obviously, we can kind of start the process, and then-
It's time to move.
Yes.
We need to create that paving district, and get a, get one underneath our belt, and we keep going forward with them.
You mentioned we've done a lot of the sewer and water stuff in recent history, and so I think maybe the streets have been on the back burner, but now it's time to get back on.
Yeah, it is.
Get something done with the ghetto, it'll be all right, too.
Any other comments?
So just maintenance projects in this year, Jay, as far as, you don't have anything on the one-year plan for anything?
No.
Substantial, right?
No.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing at five twenty. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the one-six-year plan, if you're so inclined.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, to approve the one-six-year street plan.
Second. Resolution number twenty-five oh two?
I'm trying to find it here, yeah. Resolution number twenty-five oh two, it's right in front of me, and I go-
I was just asking, just to make sure. Okay, motion and second to approve twenty-five oh two. Any other discussion?
I don't have that in front of me, is that Lloyd that still prepares that for the city?
Lloyd says.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it's probably still your superintendent.
Yeah, he's the one who did it last time, so, yeah.
All right, uh, go ahead and call and roll.
Kent?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
All right, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for your input on the streets.
And you can still blade them, if you want.
All right, we'll move on to business, and, uh, first item I'd be to discuss and consider, proposal from Power Alliance to purchase the existing cell tower lease. This has been on for a few months, uh, I don't, there's, there's no urgency on it, we don't have to act tonight, uh, I'm sort of waiting, uh, I think Michael Scholes was still looking for some more information. I did look up, we're, we're getting a payment right now, seven hundred eighty, eighty dollars and change each month, that's about nine hundred, nine thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars a year.
What's the percentage of increase up here?
Two percent, I think, uh, it went up about two percent this past year, so I assume that's what the, I, I didn't have time to dig out the, the contract. But at that rate, you're looking at, you know, probably eighteen, twenty years to, to collect that hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, the contract goes on, we approved it to go an additional twenty years or something here.
They keep redoing it all the time.
So, yeah, they keep going back.
They don't want to make those monthly payments, they just want to buy it off.
I get it, but it's like, they just-
With more, with more information that Michael might have for us, I make a motion to table, again, the Tower Alliance. Please.
Motion and second, table. Any other discussion? You call and roll.
Dustin?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay. You unanimous to table, so next, and hopefully, we'll make sure we get the information we need and-
Get it off the agenda.
Get it off the agenda next month. I'm tired of seeing it. I think we'll, uh, hold off on the NCDC discussion, I, I believe the council wants to go into executive session, so we'll try to cover our other business and do that last, if that's all right with everybody. So we'll move on to the regular agenda. First item is to discuss and consider the twenty-twenty-five light renewal. Uh, that's our health insurance package through the community pool, through LARM, or I, I'm not sure why there's LARM and light, I think they're sort of connected, but so, have you got, you've had a chance to-
Well, I talked to Lisa, that has to be a separate, I mean, it's, it's organized by the league, but I think for insurance purposes, it's its own, but it's basically, uh-
Yeah, and, uh, the bottom line is that our rates are increasing about forty percent.
Forty?
I believe that was the number.
It's astronomically high.
We got singled out, uh, I guess because of claims, and we have, we can call this Dennis Maggert, and he's gonna try to explain it, because he tried to explain it to Lisa, there's things she didn't really understand, uh, probably none of us, well, I don't know, maybe some of you guys are insurance experts, but, but at least we'll have an opportunity to ask him questions if there's, you know, I guess my, I think we can complain, but in the end, probably either-
I think we need to quote it out, I mean, I was gonna say rates. I can't believe how you, how you can be in a pool and it be this high, you know, like, uh, we have to cross the shield, my business, our rates are way better than this. We have twenty people, uh, in your businesses.
Well, maybe we should just call him, let him plead his case, say what he's got to say, you guys will have an opportunity to ask any questions.
When he talks to us, again, this is what, I mean, I'm just amazed how we're part of a pool.
That's what, amazing.
And yet, we're being penalized because our entity had some large claims. That's why you enjoy the pool.
Yeah, because you take an average, yeah.
And if we did something at renewal as a council, like, oh, let's take, let's take the cheap option, and we got caught, then shame on us, but I don't, I guess I would, yeah, I would've been here last year when we did insurance renewal.
I feel like this is like the third year of some of this plan.
And then their board, you know, Lisa explained to me, their board did talk about it, but didn't make an exception for us, but like, the other question we need to ask, is every community like that, you know? If you have O'Neill, and they had a bad claim, are they under the gun, or is O'Neill, Ainsworth, Valentine altogether? It just, it baffles me.
I think we're all kind of confused the same way. Is it a pool or not a pool, I don't know, I just haven't get it, so.
So I've been through some of these, the county does this through NACO, Nebraska Association, county officials, and they run it similar. You're in a larger pool, however, each member entity of that pool also gets kind of a report card, and if you have an older workforce, if you have a lot of claims, they will individually boost one member in the pool's rates, and at the same time, so like, the county a year ago must not have had many claims, their, their rates actually went down, and now they, I think they went up.
So the counties is similar?
The way NACO operates, I think, is similar, where it's a pool of county governments, however, I think within that pool, they do look at the individual group members in the pool, and just those based on age of employees and claims, and-
Based off my past experience-
Was forty percent, wow.
That's like no pool, I have a big part of it.
Yeah, that's like-
Well, it was our whole group.
Yeah.
Now, it was that way for workers' compensation, because that is a factor that, yeah, if you have a lot of claims, but this was not work compening, so.
That's what I thought they were talking about.
So, okay, thanks for that info, sir.
I think, yeah, I just, I think, I think that's how NACO operates similarly, which would be structured, I'm sure, this, similar to how the league structures, but, but I've, I've, I've never seen them have a forty percent swing either, so, because I'm guessing, if you had a year that you didn't have many claims, you weren't seeing a decrease.
That's what I'm saying, we are gonna see a forty percent decrease on the, yeah.
He's claiming twenty-five now, next year.
Next year it's gonna go down, they're gonna-
What if we haven't, what if we haven't, I guess maybe the other group?
Well, we, we should just perish fear, I guess, and I don't, I'm not sure what number, or how we do this, or, Cody.
We need our IT personnel. We got a phone guy here, he can hold us down. Yeah, we're ready, right?
What does this do, July one?
Hello, this is Dennis.
Hey Dennis, this is Joel Klammer, the mayor of Ainsworth.
Hi Joel, how are you?
Good, I'm sitting here with our, our four council members, and there's a half dozen people in the audience also, so, and you're on speakerphone.
Hello?
I understand that you've got some, you're gonna relay some information to us about the, the change in our, uh, health insurance rates.
Yeah, I'll kind of walk you through it if you can hear me alright.
Yep, we can hear you well.
Okay, good. Do you have the spreadsheet in front of you that we sent previously that kind of outlines the medical and the ancillary line coverages?
I do not, I think the council members have it on their iPads.
Oh, okay. So there should be two pages, the first one is all the medical options with Blue Cross Blue Shield in Nebraska. Does everyone see that?
Are you looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five, or the, we have two of them in here, or... Oh, that's just ancillary only, so, you're on the Excel sheet with two tabs?
Yeah, there should be two tabs, one at the bottom that says medical, and one at the bottom that says ancillary line.
Okay.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the medical, that's where we'll start.
It says effective January one twenty-fourth at the top.
July one twenty-twenty-five. And then in yellow it says notice this plan, we're doing July one twenty-two.
Kent, it says second document, it has the yellow highlight at the top, that's the July first.
Okay, go ahead, don't wait on me.
Okay, I think we've got it, Dennis.
Okay, okay, alright, I'm sorry, we do send a lot of spreadsheets, that's what insurance guys do, so, I hope, I hope you got it, but anyway, what you have there is a copy of the new plan for the light program through Blue Cross Blue Shield, we didn't add or delete any plans, we did make some minor changes to some of them. I'm sorry, in my notes I don't have, what plan design were you on, do you remember?
Four, option four.
Option four, does that sound right?
Yeah, I think so. So this is an only enrollment, so the city does have the option of changing the plan at this time, so the city wanted to look at another option they could. However, I think you are obviously on the cheapest plan there is, and I think you do also have an HSA, if I recall correctly, right?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Yeah, yeah, so that gives you some flexibility to deal with it. The plan design is outlined there right, and, you know, the way, the way high deductible health plans are structured, they're pretty strictly regulated by the federal government, but you have the highest deductible and the highest pocket, i.e. the cheapest plan that the federal government allows, okay? And of course, you suffer with an HSA, so you still have a very good plan, you just have the highest, the cheapest insurance product or underlying plan that you should have. So, um... What's that? On the lower right-hand corner, it shows you the rate for each individual with single coverage and each individual with family and or for each spouse coverage. Those rates went up pretty significantly this year for you guys, and I wanted to take some time to explain that, because I, I know it could be a bit confusing, but the way the light pool works is cities, when they come into the pool, are under it and given a risk category, anywhere from one to table fourteen. Table one through thirteen are only five percent apart. And table fourteen is kind of the exception, it's about twenty-five percent higher than table thirteen. I know, I know this could be a bit confusing, but when you came into the program, you had, your underwriting came back, and you had some pretty significant ongoing claims, so you got table thirteen, alright?
Good.
But it was still significantly cheaper than what you were paying previously. I think when you moved, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring my notes with me, but I did look back, when you came into the pool, you saved approximately twenty-five percent when you came in.
Yeah, I remember the first year was, yeah, it was attractive, it was, it was less than we had paid the year before, I don't know the number.
Yeah, yeah, and so, so anyway, after you've been in the pool a year, or completed it a year, in the second, in the third year, you can be adjusted one rate here. So what happened to you, you graduated one, one exception, you got, you got the light pool rate increase, which was approximately eighteen percent, but then you also moved up one rate table from table thirteen to fourteen, and that was due to the fact that you had a couple very large claims. That resulted in a very significant rate increase of about forty-five, forty-three percent, I think. So I want you to understand how that math works. The pool still is working for you, but it is not working, I know it's hard to see that with this kind of a rating period. We did, 'cause, you know, you're the only one that had that large a rating period, so we, we did some research and actually got fully insured Blue Cross quotes and fully insured United Healthcare quotes for the exact same plan, and your rates even after renewal are still about fifteen percent lower than either one of those options. So I know this rate increase looks significant, and it is, but I still think it's, the rates are extremely competitive for you, and the way the pool works is you will have the opportunity next year, you can't go any higher, but you have the opportunity to go down as much as two rate categories, so you can go down to table thirteen where you were previously, or even go down to table twelve. So, uh... We're confident that this is kind of a one-year bump for you, and we're optimistic that, you know, go back down, or at least, you know, not have anything close to this kind of rating period next year, 'cause then you can't move up another table anyway, and you can't be canceled, so it's not like, you know, that, and I still think your rates are competitive, but I just wanted to give you a chance to answer questions, 'cause the percentages look like quite a large rating period.
So Dennis, I have a question, is every community rated in these tables like that then, that is in this plan?
Yes, the light board in negotiations with Blue Cross Blue Shield established this underwriting formula.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you have a common pool to spread this risk out? Because this could happen to us again next year, or it could happen to any other community you have with us.
Well, for a couple reasons, one is, those pools, when you, when you structure a pool that way, it doesn't survive, because even in the state of Nebraska, the cost of healthcare in the western side of the state is significantly lower than the cost of healthcare in the exact same services in Omaha. So you have area ratings that you have to consider. Also, the cost of health insurance is dramatically impacted by the age of your employee. So we have some cities whose average age is fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and we have some cities whose average age is thirty-four. So charging everyone the same rate, while it sounds logical, is just unfeasible and unworkable.
So you've never done it that way?
Pardon?
You've never done it that way, it's always been individual communities getting their own rate?
Well, I've worked for a lot of associations in my thirty-five year career, and the only association that tried, that tried to do that, and I should say did it for many years, was NACO. Now, NACO had unique situations, because NACO has a, an exclusive with Blue Cross, which meant that no one could get a Blue Cross quote, if you were a county in the state of Nebraska, you could not get a Blue Cross quote except through NACO.
Yeah.
When the Affordable Care Act passed, that, that ability to provide an exclusive went away. I don't think John and Mike would mind me sharing this with you, because I'm also a consultant for NACO, so I'm familiar with what they do. They changed to this formula two years ago, because it was, it can't work without that kind of rare exclusive, so yes, they have the almost exact same underwriting rating formula that, that light has. So the pool, the main purpose of the pool is, by getting these many people together, we lower the actual, it's called retention, or overhead on the rate. So if everyone had the exact correct rate based for their demographic and geographic area, we would always have the cheapest rate, because our retention or overhead on this plan is only about nine to ten percent, whereas if you went to United Healthcare Direct, or went to Medica, or anyone else in the state of Iraq, and said, I want a standalone quote, on your side group, the overhead is twenty percent, and that's not a guess, that is a statutory overhead, okay? That, that was regulated under the ACA. So small groups have twenty percent overhead built into it, whereas the light program has to go less than ten. So it's a very efficient program, and I know it looks like it's not working well for you this year, but I guarantee you that in the long haul, it will be the least expensive option for the city, because you would've got this kind of rate increase if you'd been, well, at first point, you'd have paid for a higher rate if you did the ACA plan, and if you had any other type of association plan for level twelve hundred, you would've had an even larger rate increase than that.
So in a nutshell, if I'm understanding this right, everybody in the pool is still being rated individually, but the pool rates are different than the rates on the street?
Marked rate, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, 'cause that's, that's really, for lack of a better term, that's our measuring stick. The two things that, you know, I always work with the board on is, one, reducing the overhead as much as possible, and as we grow and grow, that number gets, we started out with about a fifteen percent retention, got it down to twelve, and it's, now we're right at around ten, and as we get bigger and bigger, we hopefully get that even smaller and smaller, because that's ultimately the savings, because the more money we can put towards claims, the lower we'll keep premium. And then, so that's kind of the main objective, and then the other thing, the other goal, was to come up with an underwriting formula that is fair and consistent. And whereas some of the other consultants that work on associations, they don't like to have written rules and procedures, I'm kind of the opposite. So these underwriting guidelines that were drafted and approved by the board basically cover, cover every situation. So if the chairman of the light board came, came to the meeting tomorrow and said, hey, I don't like my rating period, I'm the chairman, I want you to lower it, that's not the way it works. These underwriting formulas and guidelines are in writing, they're adopted by the board, approved by Blue Cross, and there is no, you know, flexibility or leeway or favoritism to having a preference or better thing.
What percentage of municipalities across the state are in this program, roughly, would you estimate?
We have about eighty cities, I think eighty-three cities right now, and it's continued to grow. So we have about nine hundred covered employee lives, and about, you know, fifteen hundred employees and dependents covered. And so, you know, a thousand life marks, employee life mark is a real important threshold, and we're getting real close to that, so that's kind of a big milestone. The NACO program, for example, has, I think, about twenty-four hundred lives, and then the educators, of course, is the gold standard, I think they have a hundred percent of the pool districts in the state, and they have a lot of leverage with Blue Cross, and, but, you know, Lynn, and works very closely with John, and early NACO, and the educators group, so they're all with Blue Cross, and we all kind of share information.
Sure, yeah.
Use that to beat everyone on Blue Cross when we act.
Are the schools rated the same way?
You know, I'm not absolutely sure, okay, I don't, I don't, I'm not that familiar with the educators, but once again, it's kind of a unique situation. When the union says, hey, this is what we're gonna have, and you have one hundred percent of the groups, then yeah, you can do some whatever you want on the rating, 'cause everyone's gonna be there. It's only, it's only when you're a government or when you have a voluntary association, kind of like we have, that I think the educators, I don't think there's any flexibility, because I think, I think the unions pretty much dictate also that they have to have Blue Cross.
Okay. I have one other question, I guess, in your discussions with Lisa, she said that you, you talked about that the board voted on something in our, on our case, that they could've approved something, but they voted to deny it, can you explain what that was? I mean, what, what were they looking at there?
Well, really, it was a poll vote, and I, I don't wanna be guilty of sharing confidential information, but you are in a very unique situation, your loss ratio warranted this rate increase, but shortly after the rate calculation was done, we were made aware of a situation that is going to improve your loss ratio, however, it's still outside the deadline, and I know sometimes it seems silly that, you know, but you have to have a cutoff date.
Yeah, we get it. We deal with those things too.
Yeah, 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 and unfortunately, if the renewal, if you're renewal with August one until July one, we'd be having a probably different conversation, but it is what it is. That's why I'm pretty confident that next year we'll see this rate go back down, because you'll benefit from the fact that the formula helps you next year, whereas this year, that cutoff date hurts you.
Yeah, we just, we just recognized a guy retired with forty-four years of service tonight, so our, our age numbers should go down next year.
Yeah, I know what you mean, I'm getting that age myself, but anyway, so it's a difficult renewal on the medical side, I really did want to give you the chance to ask any question you want. This is completely transparent, you know, Mayor Lambert from Flatlands, our chairman of the light board, Lynn, you know, is, you know, right there at the league office, she's intimately aware that we're having this call, they both do, and unfortunately, whenever you write rules and procedures, it seems like every now and then if something comes out that, that looks worse than you wanted it to, that, that can't just go in and start rewriting rules and procedures, because it would just harm someone else next time.
So Dennis, we're the only one in your group that has a fourteen rating?
You're, no, you're the only one that was at thirteen and moved to fourteen, we have a couple groups that were already at fourteen.
What's the average, give me, how, that rating, where most communities at? Give us kind of a breakdown.
Yeah, that's pretty easy to calculate, the average is table seven, so, halfway, yeah, and that's another thing we do in our negotiations with Blue Cross. The way it should work is we should have just as many groups below table seven as we have groups above table seven, and that's about where we're at. You know, that's part of the hard, hard work we do with the board after renewal, I would consider.
Well, Dennis, I, I certainly understand it a little better now, I, I didn't quite understand the pool process, but I think I see how it works now. I don't know, anybody else have any more questions, or can we let Dennis go for tonight?
There is a, there is a second tab there called label B ancillary lines, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, but, but I do think it's important to kind of show you that the way the ancillary line works is, this is all your lives, your disability, your vision, your dental, all that, and it will reduce the overhaul, but it went out the bit this year, because the group's grown, and sure enough, not only are we just moving carriers, but we are enhancing the benefits, and those rates are going down. So for every one of those coverages you see on that ancillary line page, the rates have gone down, and that's because the group keeps getting bigger. And as they get bigger, these rates and coverages will continue to improve and go down, because they, they respond to volume even more directly than the medical plan does.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah, yeah, so if you have any more questions, if, you know, if... Yeah, yeah, so if you have any more questions, if, you know, if if you, you know, really, obviously, uh this program is ran by the city for the city's benefit. So if you have, if someone shows up at a council meeting and says, hey, I've got a brilliant idea that I think, you know, can save the city, you know, $30,000 or whatever, by all means, you should feel comfortable sharing that with us. We are not in the business to keep you in the pool, just as they can keep you in the pool. If there is something better out there, we will tell you. And, you know, we want you to do what's in your best interest. We realize that you have to answer to your taxpayers. But um I feel pretty confident that that this is still a great plan for you, but uh if if you do add something else, if you think sounds better, uh by all means, we'd be more than happy to look at it and uh point out any advantages and or disadvantages, 'cause a lot of times, uh you know, insurance is, it it may look better than it actually is.
Yeah.
When you reach the fine print, it's not.
Yeah.
And then when you get out, can you get back in another year with a few folks? How's that work?
Yeah, the way the light uh bylaw written is if you leave, you have to, uh you cannot come back for at least two years, and then you have to be accepted. So uh, you know, if you were to uh uh leave and then wanna come back in in two years, we had two or three really sick people, uh the life program doesn't have to accept.
Understood.
Now, we have never declined anymore, uh but we've also never had a group leave and wanna come back. Matter of fact, we never had a group leave, period. So uh our retention so far, not on the little bit 100%.
Well, I I don't think we're talking about leaving necessarily, we're just trying to understand it better.
Okay, well, then, uh I I appreciate that, so we're here working for you, so if you have any more questions, feel free to reach out, okay?
Okay, anybody else? Oh, we're good, thanks Dennis.
All right, you're welcome, bye.
Bye.
Phone button on the left, yeah.
Oh yeah, lights went out. Well, I, at least I understand the process, what they're going through. It does, it made sense, might not like it, but it made sense.
So about 40%, what's that equate to in monthly premium for the city employees? Say either a monthly basis or an annual basis?
I wanna say monthly $9,000.
$9,000 a month incre- increase, or that's the total premium?
An increase.
That's not pretty.
No, no, it's the, it's everybody.
Something Lisa was saying, for the year, about $80,000.
About 80?
That brings it all to that. I mean, if you want the exact numbers, we can, that's only 6,600 a month, so I don't know. You might you might wanna ask her for it, publish it, I don't, I don't know. Well.
Maybe we should do some shopping, but I don't know, maybe there is no other better option.
Yeah, I don't think he was discouraged unless we're looking around.
If we don't do nothing, who do we have to vote on tonight? If we don't do anything, it rolls back over into the plan that we already have.
We have to have something to decide by July 4th.
So honest, the only other thing, just listening to that, the only other thing that some places do, and it's a lot more risky, is you go to a partially self-funded model, which the county did for a lot of years, and for a lot of years have worked very well for them. They saved a bunch until they had a year with a bunch of claims, and then it wiped out all the money they had basically saved over the previous five or six years, and wiped it out in one year.
Like last year probably would've wiped out anything.
Yeah, so if you do that, they're gonna assess you a high, because then you reinsure it, you basically have a reinsurance after you cap, okay, say like, we're not gonna pay more than $50,000 for each individual, and after that, there's a reinsurance you can get. But you basically, the city would, minus any deductible, would pay any claims that each employee has, say you're gonna give them a $1,500 deductible for the year. Their response will have 1,500, you would be on the hook from 1,500 to 50,000, and then you would pay for a reinsurance that would cover any super claims that go over 50,000. And that's, like I said, the county did that for a lot of years, and it worked, and it took one year for it to be basically gone, which is when they went into NACO. NACO, at the time, their policy was that once you come in as a county, you are charged like a super high rate for three years until you're, like a much higher rate for three years until you're vested. And once you're vested at three years, then you get charged what everybody else in the group gets charged.
What he said and you said, they're still individually like, Brown County's
They are, they are now, I didn't know it was within two years. I lose track of time sometimes as far as how long they've been at that, but I I knew they were at that now, but I didn't realize it was as close as two years that NACO went to that model.
Okay.
So apparently, prior to, two years ago, NACO was in a straight, the group is the group.
It's group. We can never do some shopping, we probably don't have a lot of choices, but. I guess if anybody has any ideas, let Lisa know, but I think it'll be tough. I don't even know if Blue Cross, Shield would court you on your own, whether they're doing this with a group. Well, like you said, it's gonna be higher, they're gonna automatically have the
They're gonna look back at our previous year, that's what's gonna hurt us, is our previous year, and they're gonna look back on that and say.
And your other option would be to have each employee go out onto the exchange, and then basically just have some kind of city policy that you're gonna reimburse the employee for whatever, you know, on an individual basis, whatever kind of of plan they would get on the exchange. And I don't know how that works from a city standpoint, but that would be your only other option, would be to say, all right, each of you employees that want insurance, you go out on the exchange, you get a policy, and then the city will, you know, obviously, there's gonna be some parameters, you're not gonna let one person have a $500 deductible on it, you know? So it'd have to be something to where everybody's kind of looking at the same thing, but.
You could put a, like, what are we contributing right now to each?
Well, the employee only, we pay 100% of the premium. Then then it breaks down, then the employee pays, they have a employee spouse, or yeah, then we, then they pay part of that. But the employee only, we pay 100% of the premium.
You know, I mean, they might be better off this getting a set amount that we give everybody in the NACO marketplace. This benefit is designed to retain and attract employees.
Just for comparison purposes, the county is 78% county paid, employee 22% of the premium. They just, they just passed theirs last meeting, is why it's fresh. They, the county pays 78% of the premium and asks the employee to pay 22%.
Yeah, if we were gonna make any changes like that, that would get into union negotiations, which is later on the agenda, there is a union, but so that's, it would be a process if we're gonna make changes. Well, do we wanna have Lisa try to make some calls, or what do you think, Mr. Mayor, or?
Yeah, I think we can have her make a couple of calls.
Do some fishing?
I wouldn't spend, my gut feeling is I wouldn't invest a lot of time in it, 'cause I just don't know that we're gonna do better. But it it wouldn't hurt to make a couple of calls, and if you guys have any suggestions, you can feed them to Lisa. But I don't think we need to take any action personally, it's up to you guys.
Why don't you have her check someone out for us? Well, this way we can, should at least try.
Yeah, right, and we'd have something
Doesn't hurt to look.
And compare it to you.
All right, moving on. Uh next item is to discuss and consider a special designated liquor license for BCW Inc. Call School Business as a Silver Circle Bar for June 28th, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 2:00 AM. June 29th, closing the alleyway behind the bar, from Second Street to Main Street, West Alleyway during the event.
Pretty much the same as been the last several years.
I was just chucking, we should just pass this with permanent renewal status.
Uh yeah, it's a manual event, I don't know of any problems over the years, so.
I've never heard any. It's all part of that weekend.
Having said that, if anybody wanted to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow, let's see, designated liquor license applications for BCW doing business at Silver Circle Bar for an event on June 28th, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 2:00 AM on June 29th, 2025, with street closure alley behind the bar, and Second Street from Main Street to the West Alleyway during the event.
Well done. Motion on the second, any other discussion? Uh Cody, call and roll.
Kent?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Uh next item is to consider temporary parking signage on Main Street. I guess there's been other ongoing, or another request from the pharmacy. It's, so I, uh apparently, many years ago, that was an action taken by a council. So I, I guess I think to to clean things up, it would be good to have the council make a motion now, whatever your pleasure is. My personal opinion is, I don't think we need any special parking on Main Street. I was down there today, there was probably 15 to 20 open spots in the middle of the afternoon. Uh there's already handicapped places at regular intervals. I, I've always felt, we just did the highway project, let's let it go for a year or two, see if we have problems or concerns and deal with them then. That's my personal opinion, it's up to you guys.
I think if you grant this one, then how do you turn back everybody else that comes in and asks you for a special parking place in front of their facility? I I'm not in favor of um giving a designated parking for any place on Main Street. I think there's still plenty of parking, we lost, what, 16 parking spots?
That's what I was gonna interject, yeah.
We lost 16 parking spots when they did the road construction, plus I think we gained several handicap parking on there. Um so I'm not in favor of designated any special parking for any single business.
Well, the pharmacy's gonna be moving, correct?
That's
That's what I've heard.
That's what they've, that's what I've heard.
Well, that is true or not anymore, but that's what I've heard in the past.
I mean, it's public knowledge that the hospital owns that building.
Yeah. I don't see any need for it. Is there any other businesses?
Well, we had We had one, previously.
We had one year after year for special parking.
You had one that just stuck a sign out for a while, but that, you know, that was, you guys put it in, I don't know how many years ago that was, that was prior to the construction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you guys put it in
Right after they opened up, yeah, and we said no to that, and I know the other one, um there was a couple other ones that asked for it at that time. And we just said, and then uh daycare, I think, asked for one too, at that time.
I I do think it would clear things up if if you wanted to make a motion and just say, as of today, there are no special designated parking spots other than the handicap as posted.
Because that would help the staff when all these requests go in, so I will, so move.
Motion on the second to have no special designated parking spaces moving forward, other than the handicapped ones that are posted.
On Main Street, right?
Right.
It depends on how much you wanna promote your downtown, I guess, for the economy for your downtown. Eventually, if you if you have a pharmacy, they're never gonna wanna move into downtown again, or something that's an in and out business. You know, that's something to consider, you know, like if you're gonna open a pharmacy, you're always having trouble with, you know, when elderly people being able to whip in and out of there, do you not have to walk three blocks to get to your pharmacy?
But I don't think I see that in any other communities, Dustin. You know, when it comes to elderly, a pharmacy, banks, insurance, post office.
Clinic.
A medical provider, home health, a lawyer, you know, I mean, it just, it's a never-ending can of worms. So anyway, yeah, I guess
I guess would prohibit something in the future, it just kind of sets the barn out for where we're at, you know? In my mind. Any other discussion? Go ahead, call and roll.
Brad?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carried for zero. All right, moving on to the uh LB840 loan committee recommendation, application number 25 dash zero one, a facade application, an amount of up to $10,000. I think this one's pretty straightforward, do you have any?
Yeah, they did debate a little bit about the actual structure of the facility. So I I do think our loan committee looked at all of those options before making the, but yes, it it meets the guidelines, it qualifies, so. There was also a question about the timeline, uh because we do have a have a policy that you can only have one per year, per site and address. So this was just, as of today, we'll be pretty close to that deadline, so the time contracts issued will be good pay.
So they've done one last year, it hasn't been quite a year yet?
Yeah, I wanna say it was, uh they, I don't know the exact date, but I think, so there's a little bit of a lag time on some of these applications, because once it's approved, then the, your attorney drafts up a contract. So we go based on that date, and it was signed in April, so, you know, we're in May right now. It was approved in April, and they signed the contract in May. So we're right up against that, does that make sense? We had a lag in that contract.
Probably won't get signed until June.
Yeah. Yeah, your contracts are, I mean, you've got some contracts that have taken almost six months to get approved. So, you know, I I think that's something that you guys have to be cognizant of when you're, when you're looking at that process and those procedures, because that is sometimes a hurdle, and it has caused some issues with some of our applications, because contracts are being issued, and then they're being held and not being sent off right away to those applicants. So then we've gotta, we've gotta deal with that, so, but this one is compliant.
Anybody, any other questions, or somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll move and reapprove application 2501, LB840 loan committee's recommendation for the facade, an amount of $10,000.
Up to 10, great.
Up to 10.
Thank you, sorry.
So they might not use that.
Right, if they don't use it, we'll only drop to 50% of that. They don't just get the full amount, regardless if they saw what they actually submit.
As as typed, Cody.
Motion on the second, any other discussion? Call and roll.
Dustin?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
I had, I had a road trip today to Carney with the owner of the O'Neil radio stations, and he just got an LB840 for new concrete in front of his business. So O'Neil allows concrete in addition to facade, and there was one other
Signage.
signage, yeah, which I think are, I think ours does signage as well, but yeah, they they include a concrete replacement for, say, like 50% reimbursement.
We just did the concrete.
Yeah, we already You just did the concrete on both.
I don't know why we don't need that concrete. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
That was a decision that was recommended by the county, or by by the city, that we not do that, so. We've had, we've had some busts for that.
Been that way ever since I've been involved, I just haven't understood why, I think, I don't know.
I just thought it was interesting, that, you know, 'cause every, so you see, everybody does their plan
A little different.
A little differently, but yeah, he said, yeah, we just did a $20,000 concrete project, got a portion of it paid by, for concrete, so.
Well, I think it depends on how your community chooses to benchmark all of those projects, because, you know, if you're increasing your assessed value, you may not be getting it back in your sales tax, which you're probably getting it if you're proper in tax values. So each of those, you know, each community has its own way to benchmark things.
All a little different.
And have we done any, I don't know if we've done any research, these facade programs, do those get, I mean, are we seeing that these these facade programs, do those get, I mean, are we seeing that these businesses that get awarded these facade grants are seeing their property values go up to the point where there is that additional assessment and you are getting more in, in city property tax?
We have seen that. I've actually seen it at theaters, but.
Yeah, I think that's, that's beneficial because that would say, you know, because you're going to see a portion of the public say, oh, why are we doing facade grants? But when you see that improving those buildings in your, your business frontage increases those property values and the city starts getting additional dollars back on property tax, that, that at least is an ancillary benefit of.
I don't, I don't think they need to see any improvement to raise your taxes. That's just what I was thinking. I don't think they care. They're just like, yeah, where's the reason to raise your taxes?
I just wish there was an option that if they said your property's worth that much, I could just tell them sold. Sold for that price.
Get checked.
Sold, yeah.
Do we vote? We do?
We do.
Okay, moving on. We'll discuss and consider the Ainsworth Betterment Committee recommendation to approve twenty-five hundred dollars to the Ainsworth Commercial Club and Ainsworth Golf Course for the Ainsworth, Fourth of July fireworks.
You're doing fireworks again, huh?
The fire department's not, uh, they have another committee, that golf course is not for you.
We'll be there and get the fire out.
Are you going to allow this?
They did, the person that did the application did come up and talk to me about that and wanted to know, because they didn't want to go through all this work and then.
Sure.
We would rather shoot them off on the Fourth of July. And what I said is, if you don't shoot them off, aren't able to, because I said, we might still be in a drought, we might be in a burn ban, might be in a fireworks ban. But I'm sure between now throughout the summer, there might be a time where they can shoot them off. And they said that would be, that'd be all right. So that's why they went forward with this is, because they did come talk to me about that.
Did, on the, Happy New Years.
Yeah.
Soon as you guys have snow.
Right before you do, right before you go to school, have a before-school fireworks celebration.
You guys aren't rabid on the set going.
No, and the way they're.
Is there somebody trained to do that?
Where they're doing these, if they are, if you're at four inches or above on your fireworks, then you have to be certified to light them off. And this displays below the threshold of being, have to be certified.
Which is a lot of work to get certified.
It is. We've worked for a lot of years. Troy was for a while too, I think.
Were you the man?
There's like three or four of us, but the test is.
That's what I had heard.
But yeah, if, if it is that golf course, more likely either us or Johnstone will have the trucks out there just to, to maintain it anyway.
Hopefully, the golf course will be green and not.
It'll be green.
Make them from the sprinklers, like, while it's going on.
All the debris that comes down later, that has to be picked up, that's a lot.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think it's a good deal.
I'll make a motion to approve the Ainsworth Betterment Committee's recommendation to approve twenty-five hundred dollars to the Ainsworth Commercial Club, Ainsworth Golf Course for fireworks display.
Motion in a second. Any other discussions?
Did you?
Call roll.
Kent.
Yeah.
Heather.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Literally just voted to spend city, set city money on fire.
Thanks for coming, Troy. Motion carried unanimously. Next item is to discuss and consider proposal from the local union, number fifteen ninety-seven, I V W A F L C I O, three percent coal increase for the twenty-five, twenty-six wage schedule. Uh, Lisa met with the union reps, uh, and I, I missed the meeting because I didn't see the reminder until, well, they were about fifteen minutes into it and I came over here and they were gone already, so it was a short meeting. But the union's proposing three percent cost of living adjustment. I know we had talked last year about sticking pretty tight to the, uh.
C P I.
C P I, which I think Lisa looked up and thought it was around two point seven, or point two seven. So it's slightly below the thirty percent. When you start looking at that, the difference, it's pennies per employee hour and only a few thousand dollars in the entire year's budget. So, um.
It changes everything.
In the interest of retaining employees, keeping folks, I, I don't think it's worth arguing about two point seven versus three myself. And I, Lisa said something about next year with the change in the, uh, minimum wage. We're already going to be getting tight on things, so that would, would make some sense to just go with this. Anybody else have thoughts?
What would we, what would we do last year? Versus?
It's, it's been right in that, I think last year we made some slightly higher adjustments to try to get our wage scale better. More competitive, she said it that way. I would say in general, our wages are not high. It's our benefit package that is attractive for the city employees with the, you know, we have a complete package.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve a three percent cost of living increase for the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six wage schedule.
Second. Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Call roll.
Dustin.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Kent.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. All right, um, since Lisa's not here, I don't think she's going to call in on a court treasure report. I don't know if Cody has anything she wants to say. So. So we got one item left to discuss the economic development agreement with N C D C. I've had some discussions with Greg and, you know, I've tried to relay those thoughts to you guys. And I, I guess my impression was you wanted to go into executive session to discuss the contract potentials.
Move, we go into executive session for the, uh, discussing the economic development agreement with N C D C.
What's that?
Your contract with him.
Discuss contract. Is there a second?
All second.
Motion in a second. Discussion.
Are you wanting this just for you? Or do you want any of us to be here to talk with you or answer questions or anything? Or, it's up to you guys. If you just want to talk as a council, then we can meet later. We've just got to find it, you know, try to get.
Yeah.
The time that works, but.
I guess it's the council's pleasure. I think maybe it wouldn't hurt.
It's up to you. I mean, I don't care one way or the other. If you want to just talk about it amongst yourselves, you and I visited one. It's like I said, I'm only speaking on behalf of myself, not on behalf of, of the board by any means, so.
Well, let's just go ahead and vote on going into executive session. You guys can decide if you'd like. Any questions for Greg and Kristen? We'll do that quick and then have a, leave it in private, whatever your pleasure is. So call roll.
Brad.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Kent.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to executive session at six eighteen.
Okay, do you want me to stay?